We will call the meeting to order. If you would please stand and join me in the pleasure of the flag. Okay, the first item on the agenda is a public hearing for Macy's Liquor. I will first read the notice that was posted.
Make a motion to open a public hearing?
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And the posting was October 23rd, 2018 pursuant to Chapter 138 of Massachusetts General Laws. A public hearing will be held on Wednesday, November 7th at 7:00 PM in the Selectment Meeting Room, Town Hall, 65 North Main Street, West Bridgewater, on the application for transfer of an all alcohol off-premise liquor license from Gigantor Corp., doing business as Macy's Liquors for South Main Street, West Bridgewater, to SKS Liquor Corp., DBA Macy's Liquor for South Main Street. Interested parties are invited to be present and to be heard. Okay, Tracy, do you want to first introduce us to the change?
Sure, so the current business located at for South Main Street will be changed in hand to a new owner, so it's a transfer of license. All of the paperwork is in hand and it's complete. The liquor agent Sergeant Warner has done his review as well, and I believe that somebody's here from the transferee, SKS Liquor Corp., if they'd like to speak to it, they...
And that would be me.
Okay.
My name is Daniel Viera. I'm an attorney with offices located about 3.1 miles from here, 106, so this is the closest place I could go to a meeting for the transfer of a liquor license. I represent the applicant. The transfer that's before you this evening is, of course, of Macy's Liquors. I'm sure many people are familiar with that. Our client is going to operate the store in substantially the same manner as it's operated in the past. Now, the application does also include a pledge of a liquor license to Rockland Trust Company, who's approved the financing for the transaction, so that hasn't been mentioned, but it is in the application. Our client, the manager, is the gentleman who'll be sitting, who's sitting to the left of me, Janesh Patel. He has extensive experience in operating liquor stores, currently has a liquor license in the town of Bridgewater, and he'll be working at this location 35 hours a week. He is tip certified and certainly more than capable of running this location. Would be happy to answer any questions that you have. The lease is all in place, and other than completing the transfer license tonight, it's a transaction that's ready to be completed.
Do you anticipate any changes to the building or everything staying the same?
Nope.
Any, are there any questions from the board?
Hours stay the same? No change in, changes in the hours of operation?
Nope, staying the same.
Okay.
No, it's been run very, very well down here. We haven't had any problems at all with the thing. It's a great, great place to do business with. I have, I have no, no concerns.
Okay, I'll just say a motion?
Make a motion that we widen?
Second a motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good luck.
Thank you very much.
That's gracious.
Oh, you're right. Thank you.
You know, motion to close the hearing?
Motion to close the hearing?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to open the hearing?
No, not yet. We have to wait until the, until 7:30.
Okay.
So up next, we have a proclamation for Civility Day, so Molly Smith had sent us an email. Molly is the chairman, I believe, of the, no longer the chairman, member of the school committee. And she sent us an email about Civility Day that the governor announced. I don't know if you wanted to say anything on it, or?
Sure. So, the National Civility Day in Massachusetts is to recognize all the great things that we do for one another and random acts of kindness. And when I learned about it, Judith Bowman, who's the founder of the National Foundation of Civility, I, of course, thought of West Bridgewater right away because we have a great group of people in our town that are always helping each other out. I know one perfect example is this past Saturday during the Spirit of Christmas in West Bridgewater, very early this year, but for very good reason, and I just thought it was, would be something that we should extend into our town.
Thank you, Molly. So what we've done is recognize this as also, in addition to the governor having it a state day of recognition, we've made it a town day of recognition. So we've written this proclamation that I will read. Proclamation of the Board of Selectmen, "Whereas the State of Massachusetts will be recognizing the Third Annual Day of Civility on November 17th, 2018, and whereas it is time to return to the basics and treat others the way we ourselves would like to be treated. And whereas restoring civility and showing respect by demonstrating small gestures of kindness go a long way toward re-establishing trust, forging goodwill, and advancing relationships in our fast-paced society. And whereas civility fosters tolerance and empathy for cultural diversity and builds a brighter future for generations to come. And a day of civility will bring respect and consideration to the forefront, heighten awareness that treating others with unexpected kindness and respect every day is contagious as well as elevate West Bridgewater's profile in all the most positive ways. And whereas this day is a call to every person in the town of West Bridgewater to participate in a random act of kindness and go out of their way to make another feel acknowledged, valued, and special. Therefore, be it we, the Board of Selectmen of the town of West Bridgewater, to hereby proclaim November 17th as Civility Day and urge all citizens of the town of West Bridgewater to take cognizance of this event and to participate fittingly in its observance." Is there anything that anyone else would like to add?
No, I just want to thank Molly for bringing this forward. It would be nice if we could have a lifetime of civility, but it's probably a little too much to ask for, especially this week with all the political stuff going on. But I think you've seen, we've all seen, the random acts of kindness that have gone on in the town over the past couple of weeks, and what happened at the gazebo, and then there was a parade, a Christmas parade, and it was, it was really beautiful. And I hope people take the opportunity to continue those random acts of kindness. Thank you.
Thank you, Denise. And thank you, Molly, again, for bringing this to our attention.
Thank you, guys.
Okay. Moving on, approving the meeting minutes of October 3rd, 2018?
Promote.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Except for review of the minutes of October 17th?
Motion to review them.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, site plan review, zoning Board of Appeals, 265 East Center Street. David, do you mind going over this?
Yep, no worries. So this, this is a piece of property that is undeveloped. If you're on East Center Street, as we all know, Route 106, and you were to be looking at New York Pizza, it'll be just directly to the left of it. It is adjacent to that parcel, and it is, like I said, it's undeveloped behind a chain-linked fence. What they're proposing to do is to put a three-bay contractor's facility there. It's allowed by right because it's in the commercial zone, so the only thing that's going on before the planning board is to have a site plan review for parking and that type of stuff. Other than that, there's no other issues at the building department sites.
I think it'll be, I hope it looks a lot better than the contractor, contractors who were in there before because that's been a nice offer years down there.
Yeah, no, it looks bad.
Or anything is probably an improvement.
So what, what type of material will they be storing there?
Yeah, so at this point, I asked that specific question to the building inspector. There is no request to store material. It's only, only for storage of vehicles. So at this point, it's a three-bay garage, and we don't know as to whether it'll be electrical or landscaping. You know, he doesn't have any clients yet, but it would be to allow three different or potentially one very large organization to be able to store their commercial trucks there.
So will a special permit detail that and be limited to that specific use?
Yeah, I don't believe it needs a special permit. I think it's allowed by right. I think it's just going to be, oh, the special permit, so yeah, it's a special permit for contractors yard, so they'll explain to the planning board or the zoning Board of Appeals, they'll explain to the ZBA as to what they anticipate to have for clients, but they do not, they have not contracted with any clients at this point. So ZBA is part of their issuance, or have some type of order of conditions that they will have to abide by.
Anthony, are you in order to pass a question?
Yeah, yeah.
If they put, it's going to be a new building product there?
Yes.
So if they put it up, right, I suppose they show the planning boards what it's going to look like, where they're going to store the cars, so some of the properties around town are like sloppy looking, they don't keep it up, but don't have to be perfect, but where they store their vehicles and how they're going to keep their property. If they don't succeed, who's going to be responsible to keep up the property? If they just say, we didn't make it after a year or two, who's going to take care of the landscaping, who's going to take care of the building, or something like that unless they flip it?
We don't have, I believe right now, we don't have any bylaws in place to require maintenance. I mean, I know there was a proposed one a few years ago to require maintenance of abandoned properties. That didn't pass through, I don't, it wasn't even moved to town meeting, but right now there isn't any requirement that the property be maintained.
Thank you.
Okay, are there any comments or concerns that the board would like to pass on to the zoning Board of Appeals?
Are there any, are there any residential houses left, right, behind?
I don't believe so, because to the left of it is the farm, which is the old Tedeschi Farm. To the right of it is New York Cancer, and directly across the street is the golf course. And behind the property is the Tedeschi Farm as well, so no, there's no, there's no residential there.
Oh, Jane Jackson's house is across it, next to the golf course.
Yep, so, let's see. So there's not a map here. Yep, so if you, if you were to be standing at the golf course, you're referring to the White House that's going towards the center of town. So that's direct, basically directly across from the farm stand, so I'm going to guess it's probably about 500, maybe 300 feet down from where they will be.
Okay, are there any comments that would like to be passed on, or is there a motion to just send it off to the zoning board without any concerns?
Promote.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Land donation, 322 East Center Street. This is a parcel that's adjacent to the golf course, Riverbend, and it is on the corner of 106 and East Street. David, did you want to add anything to that?
Nope, just as you can see, we have a map here, and the idea is, is that the person who owns this piece of property, there's no use for it to him. It's, some of it is upland, some of it is wet, and so he's looking to donate it. He approached the conservation department. The conservation department is interested in the parcel of property, however, if they take it as conservation property, it has to stay as conservation property forever. And if we ever intend to one day widen 106, we're going to want to have site control over that property, because it'd be one less property that we have to worry about doing a land taking or eminent domain. And if they own it, I am led to believe that if they own it, that there would be restrictions on widening it on that side. So he thinks it would be beneficial to the town. I think where it's adjacent to the golf course, that it would be beneficial because the golf course might be able to use it as well, and at a later date, if we want to sell the course, it can only help by having more property. So they're not looking for any payment, they're looking to be able to donate the piece of property. It will require a town meeting vote, so the Board of Selectmen would have to approve it in concept, and then the next time we have a town meeting, I don't think we should call a special town meeting for it, but the next time we have a town meeting, it would go before the voters.
Okay, any questions or comments from the board?
I don't know.
Okay, so is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the land donation.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, roadside tree removal, was Chris Anatelli coming in for this?
He is not.
Okay. So is this?
Yep, so this is an annual request, he's required to do it by law, so if there is an emergency situation, he is able to remove trees, but if he is going to do it as part of a maintenance plan, it requires the Board of Selectmen approval. So before you, you will see that you have, I believe it's 93 trees, but it's a handful of, you know, about 100 trees he's going to remove, a handful of others, obviously they're going to be trimmed down. He's just looking for the Board of Selectmen's approval, and he's also provided the list to let you know exactly where all the trees will be as well. He would be doing that during the course of next year.
Is there a motion or any questions?
Am I in order to ask?
Go ahead, go ahead.
Why are they taking these trees out? They just want to point them information, I mean.
Yep, so if they take them down, he is deeming them to be unsafe.
They're going over the street, things like that.
Or they're unhealthy. If they are deemed to be safe, but the branches are going over the trees or are impinging on the wires, they will just trim those trees.
On that note there, I know National Grid goes around, turns all the way.
Correct.
But I mean, that might be mine of what he's going to do, but.
No, but Neil, you're absolutely correct. Excuse me one second. If we refer, refer to his, his cover page, you'll see in paragraph two, he says that he'll be working with National Grid because in some cases, we able to use their labor and not our expense, so we'll be doing it in tandem with them.
Is that National Grid anymore?
Yep, it's National Grid, that's who we'll be using.
National Grid.
Okay, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to grant.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Crystal's Kitchen, they have a request for Monday on New Year's Eve. I believe they're typically closed on Mondays, but they'd like to be open for New Year's Eve. Tracy, did you have anything else on that?
Nope, it's just a one day, and if it's, if the boys have signed to approval, send a notification to the AVCC as well.
What are the times that she wants to just, to know?
We can confirm those and we'll get that to you.
Okay, are there any other questions or comments? Is there a motion?
Motion to grant.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And just as an FYI to the board, she's looking, she's normally closed on Monday, so that's why she's likely to be open Monday night. Tuesdays, she's normally open, but because Monday night would be a holiday, they would be closed on Tuesdays to still give their employees a day off. So it's just an FYI to the board to let you know.
Okay. David, public comment period? Anything from the public? Well, okay. Town Administrators Report, David?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So just an update on the opiate litigation. You'll recall that the Board of Selectmen signed on as a party to it. It is moving along in its process. It has gained multi-state jurisdiction in northern Ohio in a federal court. I spent about two full days working on it. There was about a dozen pages of plaintiff fact sheets that needed to be provided to our attorneys, so I've done all of that work and sent it over. There's about 1,200 municipalities now that have signed on throughout the entire nation. The judge has set a date of September 2019, so a year, for litigation. It is expected that the attorneys are going to take all of the information that we have provided and use it as leverage in an attempt to be able to make a settlement agreement. I think that settling is probably the best course of action that, that all parties are looking for, so again, as that goes through its process, I'll inform the board. Request to use Town Hall parking, as was mentioned earlier, Mr. Butler had a event at the gazebo this past Saturday, so I signed off on it, and I'm told that not only was it for a good cause, it was very well attended. There is a bylaw request that, the part of our new process with the bylaw study committee is that whenever a request comes in, is that I will inform the board, so the board is kept up to date, and then I will pass it along to the bylaw study committee, who will review it, make recommendations, and present it back to the board. And so there is a request to rescind Article 51, which is in reference to cigar wrappers. So again, I will forward that over to the bylaw study committee. And the last one is, is additional Chapter 90 funds. The, the State of Massachusetts received more in revenue than it had anticipated, and as a result, allocated $40 million to Chapter 90 funds, which is for local roads. That is in addition to the $319,000 that we normally receive, and so the town has received now $63,895. Normally, we would take these funds and we would just do it to any other future paving job. My recommendation is as follows, though. What I would like to do is, is that the East Street, East Center Street project that we just received funding for at this past year's town meeting was for $513,000, and at this point, we're bonding that. I want to try to lower the tax base as much as we can on that, and as a result, what I'd like to do is, I'd like to take that $63,000 and actually lower the cost of that project. So if it comes in at $513,000, we would only have to bond 449. If it comes in a little bit low, we do the difference. And so I was looking to make sure that the board thought that that was the appropriate course of action. We don't have to do it that way, we already have authorization, but whenever we can lower our borrowing costs, I always look to do that, and I just think that that would be a wise use of these funds, since quite frankly, this is found money. It still goes to paving, it still goes to road infrastructure improvement, and as a result, I think that's the most prudent course of action.
What, what's our interest rate on the bond for the East Street project?
So we don't know yet because we haven't bonded. So what will happen is, is that after the, the nice thing about a municipality, especially when you have a good bond rating, is that we're able, they go out, they do the job, and then once the entire job is complete, we will then borrow funds at that point. We'll go to the marketplace.
Roughly, what, what's it running based on our bond rating?
Yep, so we have seen short-term, short-term borrowing of less than 1%, and we've seen long-term borrowing of 2% to 3%. Unfortunately, we are in a rising interest rate environment, so we'll see what happens, but again, if we can lower the bond, I think that that would be the wise course of action.
I think that's a good idea because we have other things, we have Matfield and a lot of other intersections, and the quicker we get this thing paid off there, and we can sort of move on. And I think that we ought to contact reps and senators and get us on that bond bill so we can, every year, they, the senators, there's a bond bill there, and we ask that we'd like to have the money for, to continue the process.
Yeah, I agree. I think that it makes sense to pay off some of the debt, or future debt, and that way keep the, keep the taxes off. Yeah, go ahead, Neil.
Dave, what's our bond rating? Are we high, are we medium, are we low?
No. For a small town, we're actually very high. We're at AA1 or AA+ whichever it is, but we've actually increased our bond rating over the last couple of years. Five years ago, we were at A1.
So when you just said you'd kind of get done bonded till after the project is done, and so where do we go? Do we borrow from the bank? Because you're going to educate me by asking this question. Do we go borrow from the bank? Do we take a note out for like five years, 10 years, 15 years? I don't.
Yep, no problem. So what we do is, we have what we call bond council. Basically, all this person does is specializes in municipal bonds. So we will let that bond council know how much we're going to bond, and then they have contacts, and literally, it goes to Wall Street. So it'll just go out, it'll be a bidding process, it'll be wrapped up into other municipal bonds at that point. So JP Morgan will bid on $33 million worth of bonds. Ours will be part of that. And then whoever gets the best price or gets the best terms and conditions is the one that we are awarded to, usually based on rate, but it could be other terms as well. Some might say, we'll give you a really low rate, but it's only for three years. Others will give us maybe five years, but it'll be at a higher rate, and then bond council will provide guidance to the treasurer, and then the treasurer makes that final decision.
Treasurer from the town?
Yeah, so Scott Golda. In the past, it was John Duggan, now it'd be Scott Golda.
So you'll say, it'd be better off just paying it off in five years or three years, whatever it is.
Correct. And quite frankly, my motivation is, is that by lowering it by $64,000, I will attempt at town meeting to move free cash against it. Again, that's a town meeting vote, but I will look to pay off half of it this year and half of it next year, so I'm hoping we only have to bond it for two years, but we'll see. But that's the goal.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So is, unless there's any objection, there's not a vote needed, but I just want to make sure there was no objection to that course of action, and, and then that, that's the end of my report.
Sounds good. Thank you, David.
Thank you.
So we still have a few minutes, so I'll entertain a motion for a five-minute recess.
Before we do that, it's like an announcement, you know, our football team's got a state championship game, right, Molly, coming up Friday night there, and I'm quite sure they, they've been looking for, they've been drawing crowds, I've been, I went to three or three games already, and we wish them luck and hope they bring the championship home. I think they play Coyle Cassidy, is that correct?
Yes, Friday night.
Friday night.
Mr. Chairman, there was one other thing I want to mention. I just want to say that, I want to say that our town clerk in her office did a really good job. You know, we are now with early voting. It used to be that they really had one busy day, and now they have two busy weeks. So just today, the town clerk gave me this information. We had 888 early voters, we had 3,500 total voters, which was 65% of our entire voting base, which shows that when people aren't as apathetic as they used to be in the past, so regardless of who they vote for, as long as they vote. But the point is, is that for early voting, that puts a lot of pressure on our staff for an entire two weeks, and then understand what they do with an early voting ballot is that they have to organize it, reconcile it on a nightly basis, then at the end, on Saturday when there was the vote, on Tuesday, I'm sorry, when there's the vote, they stand there manually and feed in every single ballot as if it's one of us. And somebody has to do that 888 times in this case, so, so again, I just, they have late nights. Annie was there, she, she was doing her reports at 11 o'clock last night, a lot of work behind the scenes that people don't see, and again, we don't hear of any complaints and issues or problems, so I just wanted to give credit to Annie and her staff. I think she did an exceptional job.
I have a copy for her, 65%, 3,476 voters, sound official, she's still counting, you know, but that's unofficial, but that's good. She did a great job.
They can kind of work a little in half, just so the Republican folks know. Oh, not funny.
I couldn't hear you, Neil, I was listening to the traffic. But no, that, we really appreciated everything that her team did. By the way, David, you were here until past 10 o'clock last night, working as well. I know that because I was on the phone with you till 11 o'clock last night, and I happened to know you were here, and I had some questions, so I figured it was an opportune time. So I just wanted to say thank you. I know it's kind of difficult because I have a, a job, and I'm away from here, you know, 50, 60 hours a week, so I tend to contact you on Saturdays and sometimes on Sundays, and last night was a late night. I, that's rare, I promise you, that's rare, but thank you.
No, you're very welcome. Thank you.
We have a few minutes. Is there a motion for a short recess?
Promote.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Okay, we'll go back into session. The last thing on the open session agenda is a continuation of hearing liquor license agent findings.
Motion to reopen the public hearing.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? And this is, sorry, all in favor?
Aye.
And this is for Narahuka Lounge, 3 South Main Street. So, Chris, I hate to do this to you, but I'm going to ask you to just briefly go back through your report if you could, please.
Sure. Okay. Back on August 12th, 2018, at approximately 23:26, dispatch received a 911 hang-up call from Narahuka Lounge, 3 South Main Street. On callback, the dispatcher spoke to George Carrum manager. He stated to dispatch that there had been disturbance inside his establishment with intoxicated parties, but they had left the premises. He did not know which direction they had left in. A short time later, I came in to start my 12 to 8 shift. I was informed of this call and stated that I would respond to it myself. I arrived a short time later and spoke to George Carrum. He stated that the vehicle containing four individuals, two females and two males, had pulled out, pulled in right out front. He observed them drinking inside the vehicle before exiting the vehicle and entering his establishment. He stated to me, he wasn't going to let them in, but two of them, including the driver, were extremely intoxicated, and he thought it best to let them sober up inside. He then proceeded to sell them two basic hookah pipes costing $50. Three out of the four parties' license numbers were scanned, and the information was provided to me. The fourth party had a passport, which was, so that party was unknown. George stated that one party was underage, but the three licensed parties were all over 21, so if there was an under 21, it was the one with the passport. Mr. Carrum stated that one very intoxicated male attempted to place an order for alcohol. When this was refused, he got very angry, and several members of the group began causing a scene and yelling. A highly intoxicated man also threw a hookah- A highly intoxicated man also threw a hookah pipe. This is when Mr. Karim called 911, but the group immediately left at this point, so he hung right up. George did not report any disturbance or altercation inside his establishment until a callback was made on this 911 hang-up call. According to Article 3, Section D of the town's alcohol policy and rules and regulations for the town of West Bridgewater, the licensee will ensure, quote, "The manager, alternate manager, or some member of the staff, report immediately to the West Bridgewater Police Department any altercation, criminal activity, or medical emergency that occurs on the premises, including in the parking lot or exterior of the building." It's my belief that Mr. Karim had no intention of reporting any altercation or disturbance to the West Bridgewater Police Department, and his original call was a 911 hang-up. His action of picking up the phone led to the group fleeing the establishment, thus ending Mr. Karim's intention on calling the police. Disturbance was only learned of on callback. In addition, Mr. Karim should have reported parties in his lot openly drinking alcohol in their vehicle, and then allowed these intoxicated individuals into his establishment. By his own words, he described two of them as wasted, and the third as drunk. He stated he let them in to allow them to sober up, although this was one half hour before closing time. In my opinion, this is unacceptable behavior from a liquor establishment, and showed very poor judgment. And I'd love to see you determine whether it was a violation or not.
Thank you, Sergeant. Are there any questions for the sergeant right now, or?
Not right now.
Okay. So George, I'm assuming this is your attorney next to you?
Yes. May we approach, or set the table?
Yes, yes, we want to do that. George, can you, we'll get you here also?
Thank you very much, Sergeant, if you don't mind. Good evening, members of the board. My name's Alan McCarthy. I'm an attorney in West Bridgewater, dealing and associates. I represent Mr. Karim in the Narahuka Lounge. I did have the opportunity for the board's information, I did have the opportunity to review the, I believe it was the September 5th meeting, the minutes that were there. So I have reviewed that. I also do have the police report that was provided by Sergeant Warner, or my client. I would ask the board at this point, that given the evidence presented to you, both in this police report, the testimony here by Sergeant Warner, and the testimony that was provided to you on September 5th, and again, we're here to answer any questions that you may have, also myself through my client if needed, that there is actually not a violation of the alcohol policy and rules and regulations of a liquor license in the town of West Bridgewater. I think there's multiple aspects to this, and initially, it appears that the violation is based upon an assumption that my client had no intention of reporting this incident. And I would suggest that I think it's a slippery slope for the board to base a violation on an assumption that someone was or was not going to do something. And I will get into that. What you have here is, my client, it's uncontroversial, did call 911. And I believe that he testified previous to you, that he called from not his cell phone, but a landline at the Hookah Lounge. He actually walked out of the Hookah Lounge when these individuals had left, and that the call became disconnected. And as, and I'm sure if the sergeant has any issues with, I believe, my representation of this, but how the 911 callback system works is, it's a pretty immediate callback, within 30 seconds, within a minute. Obviously, the purpose of that is, if there's an emergency, and someone is in a very dangerous situation, and a call is hung up for an unknown reason, the police want to know immediately what the reason was that for. So we're not talking about a long, even 10 minutes amount of time, in which my client had an opportunity to call back. He picked up the callback, and at that point, he told the dispatcher, there was a disturbance, and they left. The purpose of the 911 callback is also not investigatory nature. It is to find out, is there an emergency? Do we need to send someone there now? There was no need. What the dispatcher then did do was make a report, and Sergeant Warner, and doing his job, obviously, not only as a police officer, but as his agent for the town, came out to Mr. Karim. In terms of when you look at, he had no intention of reporting it, I would suggest, first off, if that was the case, Mr. Karim could have told the 911 callback, nothing happened. He could have said that. And in fact, then, there probably would have been no report, no opportunity for Sergeant Warner to go to the Hookah Lounge. My client told him there was a disturbance. More importantly, when Sergeant Warner arrived at the Hookah Lounge, my client told him everything that happened. If he had no intention of telling them what happened, he would have said, nothing happened. Instead, he told them what is in the report. So I would suggest that if this is based upon, if the violation is based upon, you did not immediately notify the town of West Bridgewater, I suggest that that is not a violation. I think it's based upon an assumption that, I believe the facts show, is not accurate. So I would suggest that. In furthering that, I would also suggest that I do know it was raised by, and I apologize if I'm not sure which select person, was that the timing of the call? And the call should have been made, actually, when my client observed individuals in the parking lot, because it does cover that. I would suggest that it's important to know that, when my client spoke to initially Sergeant Warner, he said he saw people drinking in a car. He did not determine, and could not determine, what they were drinking. Okay? It is later added by, when they got out of the car and there, he determined that they were intoxicated. But at the time that he observed people in the parking lot, he does not know what they're drinking. I don't know how we can say that a licensed established owner has an obligation to call in that situation. I think we, strike that. You as a board, and we in general, have to make sure that we treat all licensees the same. And again, I suggest, when we look at that type of, just that conduct, where does that go? And I'll just take as an example, the town golf course. If there's people after a round of golf in the parking lot, hanging by a car with some cans in the hands of a koozie, is that, are they obligated to call and report that to the police? Because that's what we're saying. Or if there's a golfer on the golf course, and he brings a couple beers in his bag, he would be required, the golf course, to call the police and report that. So I suggest that here, there is no evidence that my client knew these people at the time were drinking alcohol. Therefore, there's no criminal activity. Pursuant to the regulation, he only has to call if there's criminal activity. When did he call, is when the people were inside the establishment. I would suggest too, I know it was raised, that he should not have, or that it was illegal to allow intoxicated persons inside the establishment. I disagree with that. Chapter 138, Section 69 specifically states, "It is illegal to serve an intoxicated person in your establishment." It is not illegal to allow an intoxicated person into your establishment. It may not be the best judgment, frankly, for the establishment, because then you have to deal with that person. You have to then make sure you don't serve that person, which is what he did. It is not illegal to allow someone into your establishment if they're intoxicated. There is no crime there. He did not have to call then. He allowed these people in. And then frankly, at this point, we're in a position where he did what an establishment should do. He did not serve these people. He did not serve them, which ultimately unfortunately led to a disturbance, but he did not serve them. Obviously, we have many instances where people do serve, and that's where obviously the violations are clear. He did not serve these people, they then got upset, and that's when my client called 911. I would suggest then after that too, there was testimony, or at least there's evidence, that at least one of the persons was sober. My client did not see who drove away, there's no instance in terms of him having to report that, but by that time, he had already called the police. I would suggest he scanned the licenses, he did everything according to the proper procedure. And I just suggest that, and again, I'm not faulting at all the work of Sergeant Warner, he's doing his job and I appreciate that. I just suggest, at this point where we are now, that basing any type of violation is going upon assumptions and inferences that I don't believe are supported. So I would ask that the board not find a violation. And at this point, I'm glad to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Are there any questions?
So, just so I, because I guess I forgot, maybe I don't recall some of what was answered last time we were here. So the, is it 11:26? Is that the time?
That's, I believe that was the time of the call. And again, I wasn't here at the last hearing, I can only go based on what the minutes were, but I'm assuming they're accurate.
Right. Well, we can refresh both of our memories then.
Sure.
So the call came in at 11:26 about these individuals. Was that call made inside or outside?
That was on a phone, walking outside as these individuals were leaving, so it was from a landline, but a, not connected wireless, but not a cell phone, walking out of the establishment.
Okay.
And at that point, the individuals were driving away, and my client, in fact, did get the license plate of that number, and reported it to the dispatch callback.
Right.
He was outside.
Right. So he was, so, and that's what I recall, and the issue was, he lost his reception.
Correct.
That's why the call hung up.
Correct.
So, how did the call from the police department come in two seconds later?
Well, it was within, he walked back into the establishment.
In two seconds?
Well, I said it can come within anywhere between 10 seconds to 30 seconds.
One second had it.
I didn't say two seconds. A callback comes within about 10 seconds to, definitely within a minute. I mean, ultimately, it's to prevent a tragedy. They do it as fast as they can. There are different 911 systems, I'm not sure. Some calls go to state police initially, then to West Bridgewater. So I don't know how that initial call goes, so that's why sometimes there is a delay. But I can tell you this, the delay is no longer than a minute.
Oh, okay.
That I can say. I can't say within two seconds, because it can have to go maybe from state police to West Bridgewater, et cetera.
Yeah, I'm just trying to understand all the activity, you know?
Yeah. It was hectic.
Yep. They came outside, there was all this hectic activity, them getting in their car, he's on the phone, he's disconnected from the police department, he's trying to get the plate number, they're zooming out of the parking lot down the street.
Correct.
No, they weren't zooming down the parking?
No, I'm sorry, but he got the license plate. I apologize. I was just agreeing with you, but yes.
I'm confused.
Yes, you can.
Last time when I said, first thing I got was the license plate. I grabbed my pen and paper, got the license plate, when I walked, grabbed my phone, they were leaving.
Okay.
And when they left, I didn't see them leaving. That's why I ran outside to see what direction they were going in. I went all the way to my pole sign, I loved the connection. There was no zoom, nothing.
Okay. So then, that's when he went back inside, and at some point the phone...
And put the phone on, back on their reception to gain their connection.
Okay.
And doesn't, you can't, when you put it back on, doesn't do it right away.
Okay. And then the phone regained its connection.
At some point, yes. And there are, I mean, there are logs that the police could have that would show, it's called a CAD sheet, the timing of the calls, but we did not have time or opportunity to get those. Nor do I think they're necessary. I don't think that's in dispute.
Don't think it bothers me about this thing, but you were invited in, in the first place, okay? And generally, you know, by using good judgment there, you know, you see trouble out there, you do call the police. When they're outside, once you get them inside, then you're really inviting yourself for some real problems.
No, I understand that, Mr. Bushman. I do understand that.
That's where I have the problem, and I don't know, maybe we're here again from Sergeant Warner on this. Do you feel there's a violation there?
My only question would be, on the cellular phone, or like mobile cordless phone being dropped, he's outside, but he didn't get any direction of travel on his vehicle. Phone dropped, and he was outside.
Right.
Why, why no direction of travel? He didn't know where the vehicle drove, south, north, where it headed. He wasn't able to provide that information, and stated he never saw, you know, which direction it left in. Yet, he's inferring that he was outside at that time, and that's when he lost the call. So, I just...
Sure, you can answer that.
I can explain it.
Yeah?
Remember I told you, the first thing I grabbed was my pen and paper. Went outside, copied the plate. I was coming in, they were leaving. I went to grab my phone, usually I leave it at the bar. Wasn't there, I went to the kitchen, if you go back to the video. When I grabbed my phone from the kitchen, I went outside, they weren't there. 911, I ran outside the door. I didn't, I don't think, I even said hi, the phone went out of range. That's how I came to hang up.
If the board is interested, I also have a burned copy of the actual 911 tape, if the board wants to hear that. Whether we have the capabilities of listening to that, but I also have that, if you're interested.
I would.
And I would just suggest...
Did you hear it?
Sure. If that's going to happen, I would ask though, for that to be heard, but I would also then ask for a continuance, so I could get the CAD sheets from the police department to show the timing of the calls. Because, you know, if this is going to be a situation where we're now calling into the credibility, which I didn't really think was at issue, but then I need to show that when this callback came, because that's the key. And I can represent, the callback from 911 is quick. There's no dispute as to that.
I'm very new at this, so I, you know, for the sake of being fair, I'd like to hear all the facts.
Oh, I have no, absolutely no problem with that.
Do we have, do we have a laptop that we'd be able to, to play a CD?
Yeah, I think we have a CD.
I have a copy of the CD, but...
It happens all the time in court, too.
We don't have anything to play it on?
I really don't want to continue this out longer. I mean, it would be good to hear, but I don't think we need to keep coming back for this. I think we need to just get it over with. I mean, I think we're all in agreement that poor judgment may have been shown by not calling immediately. But that's not what we're here for. We're here is that poor judgment in actual violation. I understand what the attorney said, that it is somewhat based off of an assumption that it wasn't going to be reported. I don't know, does anyone have, Denise, or Alden, do you have thoughts on that? If it...
Repeat that again.
Well, another question, another question. On page five of the license, the liquor license general information, did you, did your client ask them to leave when they became unruly?
Yes.
Okay. And did they refuse to leave?
I said, you leave or I call the police. And then I figured, when I went outside, I figured best thing to do, just call the police.
And then they left.
Oh yeah, that's why they left, because I warned them earlier. Which it was, you know, and pure honest mistake, I said, I'll call the police. You leave or I call.
Then you were out in the parking lot and didn't see what direction they went in?
No, 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 no. When I went to get the plate, they were leaving. I went to grab my phone, by the time I grabbed the phone, they left. When I hung up, when the hang-up phone was made, I asked my customer, anybody see them? If you go back, you see everything I said. Anybody see what direction the vehicle left? They said, no. The phone rang at that time. When the phone rang, I told the sergeant, first, I don't know if it was the dispatcher, because it did not say town of West Bridgewater, it said MGA?
It's who it comes...
The caller ID, MGA, right?
I don't know what to...
Especially, again, it goes through different agencies, so it may become from the state police.
It comes straight directly to West Bridgewater, but it would have just written up...
It did not say town of West Bridgewater, I told you.
Wouldn't say that, yeah.
No, your phone call comes directly to us, not through the state police.
No, he was saying the callback.
The callback would be directly from our dispatcher, directly to your establishment,
But all it says on the thing is 3 South Main Street, um, and then the phone number. It doesn't come up as Narahuka Lounge on, on our display, so.
Okay. I mean, in, there was good judgment shown. I mean, once there was what George thought was an altercation, he did call 911, um, which is what we want. We don't want people to hesitate when they think there's an altercation to call 911. Um, so in that aspect, good judgment was shown. Um, so Eldon, Denise, did you have?
Well, see, this is a new license. I bought it for it myself. I hate to see anything be put on that license too, because, I mean, I know George is trying and he's a businessman there and, uh, it's unfortunate that, that happened and I come up with it, was not using the judgment, but I kind of concur with the lawyer, what he said too, about, about the thing. I just, uh, I just favor him maybe. And, you know, I'm well aware, we have our agent out there and, you know, and I, that's what we got him out there for. And, uh, you know, I don't like to go against, uh, our agent either, you know? I mean, when he comes in and he feels that, uh, there was a, a violation here. So, how do you feel anyway about it?
I mean, to that, I mean, Sergeant Warner did his job exactly how he showed up. There's no disputing that. But now I'm-
You can't take anything personal that you guys do. It's like, I'm not upset that you don't agree with me or don't agree with me. It's, it's, it's an incident that I felt should be brought to the board's attention. And it's up to you to determine whether there's a violation.
And that's exactly-
Other judges, that's all there is.
Um, I am a little bit hesitant to, um, deem it a violation based on there being some assumptions made and being 911, 911 was called, not immediately, but, um, a little while later, um, and George was fully transparent. It appears for the most part with what happened and he did say what he witnessed and how the patrons were acting. Um, so, uh, I would be inclined, um, to deem it not a violation of the policy.
Well, I feel a lot like, well, I feel exactly like you do about it. I, I think right now, uh, George finally, maybe he didn't use good judgment, but then, then he, he, he called 911 and, you know, they, he, uh, he made it up for it that way. And I, and I think that, uh, maybe this time, I, I don't think I would, I would vote for a violation there.
Well, I think I have to say, I feel a little insulted to have to believe that you observe, um, your client observed people in a car drinking and it was an important fact to bring up, but they could have been drinking Pepsi, um, and not alcohol. But I appreciate that you clarified that's what it might be. Um, at the same time, I think you also did a very good job of explaining all of the facts to us and juxtaposition of the law. Um, and based on that, I'd have to say I leaned towards what you said, that in this particular instance, there isn't a violation based on the current policy that was in effect at that time.
Okay, um-
So we're, you're welcome, we're the three of us, huh?
So is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to the fact, a violation.
I'll second it.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, members of the board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Chris, can I hang on for one minute?
Go.
We just, uh, we're all done. I'll just, um-
Can I ask one quick question?
Yeah, go ahead.
What is a violation towards, just say, what is a violation?
This-
What would happen on a violation, on a liquor establishment?
Um, so we're actually in the process of, um, making significant changes to the policy, but the current policy, the first violation is a warning, the second violation is two days, third violation is, uh, four days. Yeah, yeah, a suspension.
Down button.
Yep, yep. And then fourth would be 10 days, um, up to relocation. Yeah, and there's, there's many things that would constitute a violation, there's a whole list. Welcome to this if you want. Um-
Mr. Chairman, I would ask you to close that hearing now, please.
Okay. Is there a motion?
Go ahead.
A motion to close the hearing.
All right, I'll, uh, second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, um, we are now done with open session. We will be going to executive session. Um, I would entertain a motion to enter into executive session, not to return to open session for purposes of conducting a strategy session for non-union personnel, specifically the conservation commission agent. And I need a roll call vote.
Are they, yes?
Raised, yes.
Can they, yes? We are now in executive session.